As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Clayton Town Council to order. I'd like to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. So I always hate to have to ask this question, but I have to. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, can we, I'd like for us to pull number three F off the consent agenda and add it under nine B, under new business.
Three F?
Yes, sir.
And turn it to nine B, under new business.
Mayor, under number 12, we need a brief closed session for legal advice.
All right, is that everything? All right, I got those noted on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented with those modifications. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under administrative items, will be the Clayton for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, we're going to bring to you an episode of Clayton for you that focuses on wastewater. We thought with the new Sam's Branch plant nearing completion, it'd be a good time to educate our public on what wastewater is in Clayton.
In this episode of Clayton for you, we're lifting the lid on what happens when you flush from your home to the treatment facility and beyond. That rinse water, shower spray, and laundry load all turn to something we call wastewater. And trust us, it doesn't just disappear.
Wastewater is anything that goes down the drain from homes, businesses, and industries across town. Before it can be safely released into the Noose River, it has to be treated to standards set by state and federal agencies. That's where we come in. Our team of state-certified operators do it all. From running equipment to testing samples in the lab, we make sure every drop of wastewater is fully treated. Our current treatment facility, built in the 1950s, is nearing the end of its useful life. To ensure reliable service for years to come, we're building a new facility scheduled to go online in early 2026. The Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility will have the capacity to treat up to 6 million gallons of wastewater per day. We take pride in our work here, not only providing a critical service to our community, but also protecting the environment and public health. To help support this effort, please remember, do not flush items like feminine products, condoms, or even flushable wipes down the drain. Never pour fats, oils, or grease down the drain either. These materials can clog sewer lines and damage equipment.
So the next time you turn on the tap or take a shower, remember that wastewater matters. And in Clayton, we're proud to keep it flowing safely.
Thank you, sir.
That was fantastic. Our wastewater treatment facility was built in the 1950s. So that makes what's working today about 76 years old. Almost as old as Ruth Anderson. Thank you. That was great, and we appreciate the good work the communication team does for us. Up next, under introductions and special presentations, first up will be the National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation. And I'd like to give the floor to council, I mean to Mayor Pro Tem Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Clayton proclamation, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas people in the United States are 26 more like, 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income counties, countries. Whereas North Carolina has more than 1,700 gun deaths every year with a rate of 16 deaths per 100,000 people. A crisis, a crisis that costs the state $19.5 billion each year, of which 471 million is paid by taxpayers. North Carolina has the 23rd highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from those who are dangerous to themselves or others. And whereas mayors, council members, law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources known their communities best are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it. In our best position to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep our arms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now, therefore, on behalf of Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim June 6, 2025, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effect of gun violence and to honor and value human lives proclaimed by the town of Clayton this second day of June 25th. No, so second day of June 2025. Sign Jody McLeod.
Yes, and at this time, we'd like to ask the members of the Johnston County Chapter of Moms Demand for Action for Gun Sense in America to please step forward and let's get a picture. Yep. Wonderful. Awesome. Thank you. Up next will be the Pride Month proclamation, and I give the floor to Councilmember Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Clayton Pride Month proclamation. Whereas LGBT+ Pride Month is celebrated nationwide in June each year. And whereas this month was chosen to commemorate and remember the victims of anti-LGBT+ violence and recognize ongoing efforts to end gender-based discrimination. And whereas despite great progress, LGBT+ Americans still face discrimination simply for who they are. And whereas the town of Clayton stands with the LGBT+ community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all. And whereas Executive Order Number 24, NC Registered 958 to 962, which was issued on October 18, 2017, established policies prohibiting discrimination, harassment, and retaliation on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity or expression in state employment, state services, and state contracts under the jurisdiction of the Office of the Governor. And whereas Executive Order Number 24 directed the Secretary of the Department of Administration to create the Commission on Inclusion to identify additional policies and measures that promote diversity and inclusion. And whereas the town of Clayton strives to make our community a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated equally. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBT+ Pride Month and commend its observance to all citizens. Proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council on the second day of June 2025. Jody McLeod, Mayor.
And if all, yes. No, anyone, anyone, all of you, please come forward and get your picture made with Archer. And that would be fantastic. We want to have a documentation of this.
Make a guess, I'll take about two steps backwards. Thank you.
And let's have a nice round of applause. All right, up next is a public hearing. It's the Fiscal Year 2026 Manager Recommended Budget. It's the second reading, and I'd like to give the floor to Town Manager Rich Capola.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to ask Todd Milton to come on up and present once again tonight. So last Town Council meeting, we had the first public hearing with the initial reading of the proposed public, excuse me, the proposed fiscal year 26 budget. We've got a few updates to add or incorporate into this year, this meeting, as well as a couple, I say highlights, that we wanted to make people aware of as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Todd and let him get you guys updated.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. There we go. Yeah, as we stated, we all met here a couple of weeks ago, talked about our, our Management Recommended Budget for this year. Tonight, for our second public hearing, just want to provide some quick updates and answer any questions that you might have. That's the old one. Can you? You already saw that file. We want to provide something a little refreshing. There we go. I think that's it. There we go. Okay. So a few updates quickly from May the 19th. Our amount of property un-repeal decreased from $480 million to $379 million. Although we do not know the effect of that decrease yet. Doesn't, it's not helping us sort of tell the futures of what the, what the property tax value is going to bring. This has, was factored into the budget last week. We want to point it out tonight, the impact of the cost of our utilities that we buy and resell. We are budgeting expecting, we know we're going to get, cost increase of 10% for water and sewer and 3.5% electric. Just to point out, we are recommending rate increases for both water and sewer. The water and sewer rate increase we're recommending is just above that 10%. And our electric rate recommendation is at 2% at this time. So lower than the expected increase in our cost of power.
We, let's just get that clarified for me and for the record. The 10% water and sewer increase is directly connected to the 10% increase in cost that the county is bringing, is requiring to Clayton.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that's really very clear. It's a transfer of cost.
Correct. Thank you. We have provided you, council, I believe, with the detailed budget report by department. So that's been provided and is available for review. We are, a couple of slides down, we'll show you the combined revaluation tax history, combined as in between the county and the town. Just to shed a little more light on what, what we've experienced the last few years. County tax rate is still undecided. Currently, the recommended rate is 64 cents per $100 value. That's a 3 cent decrease from the fiscal year 25 rate. So we'll wait and see what that, what the county ends up deciding to do with, with their tax rate. We know that we're recommending 49 cents, which is just 4 cents over our revenue-neutral rate. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. And we want to talk a little bit more, we have a little more detail around the projected increase in employee costs for healthcare benefits for the, for the upcoming fiscal year. This slide is, is really similar, maybe exactly similar to what we went through last time, and I'll just kind of quickly jump through it. Again, just to let the, the public know, I think we've talked about this with council on numerous occasions, but the town did implement a base budget strategy this year to trim the budget down, be a little more conservative in, in what we started with. We, we took a look at operating expenses, contracts, the more discretionary line items that we have that are outside of personnel. And sort of looked at the last few years of actual expenses in those areas. Took an average, kind of compared them to the current budget. If that was vastly different, we asked people to justify any increase. If it was, if, if the average was lower than the current budget, we would reduce it. We reduced it down to the average. And then we gave department heads the opportunity to ask for increases and justify those to us of the budget request process. So I think it was, it was pretty successful. It, it gave me the opportunity to, to discuss budget requests with every one of our department heads at length. Rich had the opportunity to, Rich and the executive team had the opportunity to review every single request that came through and ask for more justification in times and things like that. So it was a good, it was a good conversation to have, to begin the budget development process. We also used a new, a new budgeting software, ClearGov, which has been pretty good for us so far. We were able to organize personnel budgets, requests, and things like that without getting too far into the weeds. We're also in the middle of implementing our strategic plan in ClearGov as well. So eventually, I mentioned this last time as well, but eventually, we'll be able to show you how our budget directly lines up with the strategic plan. We'll have some nice reports, some website features that we can include so folks can go on the web and see that as well. So, general fund is currently balanced at $67.2 million. That is with the recommended 49 cent for $100 value tax rate. This rate generates almost a million less revenue in revenue for us for personal property compared to the existing tax rate. Our capital outlay in the general fund is just under $18 million, $17.9. That includes a $7.5 million land banking opportunity for economic development purposes. We've also leveraged debt financing where, where appropriate and fund balance to appropriation, fund balance appropriation to balance the budget. Water sewer funds balanced at 48.3. That includes our aforementioned recommendation of a 10.2% combined rate increase. It's 6% on water and 12 and a half on sewer. This is combined to the 12.2% rate increase in the prior year. We're able to get that down a little bit for next year. Again, Johnston County has increased water and sewer bulk rates by 10%. So that's sort of been passed on in our rate recommendation. Water sewer has 9.7 million debt service increase because of Sam's Branch. The financing for Sam's Branch construction is coming online. We're going to start paying that back. And capital outlay is about 2.2 million in the water fund, water sewer fund. Electric fund is balanced at 25.7 million. This includes a 2% recommended rate increase, which is the same that we had projected from last year. But again, wholesale power will increase by 3.5%. We're able to not pass the entire 3.5% on to the customers through, I think, effective budgeting practices. We had 8.8 million dollar debt service increase, and that is for infrastructure, infrastructure for new development. Capital outlay in electric fund is 6.2 million. And we're recommending seven new positions across the three funds for a total of $700,000. That's four in the general fund, three in the enterprise funds. This is a repeat from last time, but just to quickly summarize. CPI was, was down slightly. Personal consumption expenditure is down slightly, but still a lot of uncertainty remains around tariffs, inflation. The Fed is, is continuing to maintain the effort to get us down to 2% inflation. So that's going to affect interest rates in the current year and all sorts of economic factors, as you know. Just to go over revenue assumptions and building the budget for the current year. We recommended that we keep 5 cents per year with whatever the current tax rate is to fund the CIP. Avalon taxes, we assumed in this, in this exercise would grow 14.6%. The value of one penny being now 545, almost $546,000. We did include a 1, a 1 cent reduction for the unknown impact of that $379 million of property still under appeal. Don't know exactly how that's going to affect us yet, so we're trying to be conservative with that. Made the assumption that sales tax revenue will increase 2.5% compared to the 9.4 million projection for the current year. Development revenue, we assume, will probably decline due to economic uncertainty. And, well, we shouldn't say probably. We assumed it for these, for these, for the purposes of developing our budget. And we assume the investment income will grow 700,000 compared to the 25 budget. So we did budget a 2% COLA for all employees, cost of living adjustment, and also a 5% salary adjustment pool. This pool is meant to cover merit increases, things of that nature. We also anticipate perhaps maybe using some of that pool to cover some of the increases in state health plan employer coverage. We, we did, we did budget an employer contribution increase of 10%. We don't know what that contribution increase will be. We won't know that until around August or, or later in the year. So. And, and the third bullet there is sort of a new one that, that Robert learned this week. State health plan employee-only coverage is going to go up either, they think, $40 or $100 per month, depending on the health plan chosen by the employee. Retirement fund contributions also went up 0.74% and just over 1% for law enforcement officers. So those have been baked into the budget as well. A revenue-neutral rate was calculated at 45 cents per $100 value. There was also a, the statutory calculation increases revenue by 6%. That's without, with or without the 4 cents on top of the 45 cent revenue-neutral rate. Again, average assessed value for a single-family residential home is around $355,000. This is a repeat from last time, so any questions, please feel free. Final thoughts, you know, we think that the budget reflects continued use of budgeted funds in a thoughtful, efficient, effective manner. Major fund balance appropriations are not a financially prudent strategy going forward, nor are they sustainable, as you know. Water and sewer are going to continue to require rate increases to fund reinvestment in the system. Long, we have, you know, we're, we're getting ready to open the water reclamation facility. We still have to talk about water issues. We're still going to have water supply issues, as everyone around us is going to have as well. Electric fund will, will require smaller rate increases, but rate increase is the same to sustain the financial health of the utility. Yeah, the town, the town continues to experience strong growth, which impacts every inch of our budget. All of our budget is, is, we create a budget that we feel offers All of our budget is, we create a budget that we feel offers the best services to our folks, to our town citizens. As we get more town citizens, our operations costs are going to go up. So we continue to see that. Ongoing economic uncertainty that we spoke about a couple of slides ago is, you know, we're motivated to be as conservative as we can due to that because we don't know how our revenues are going to be affected. We don't know how the expenses are going to be affected. Expenses are affected by tariffs and interest rates and all these things, and so we have it on both sides. We're trying to be conservative in spending to match that uncertainty. And yeah, strong financial health requires long-term planning, so we're trying to do that as well. This is an updated table from last week. There were a couple of really small shifts from category to category here, but the overall numbers are the same, 67.2 million general fund total, 48.3 in water sewer, 25.7 in electric. Open it up for a public hearing?
Go ahead and take some questions from the council first, Mr. Casey.
Thanks, thanks, Todd. Appreciate the level of detail. I said this before, I want to say it again, you know, this baseline budget, I really appreciate that approach versus taking the last year's number and throwing a certain percentage on it or a calculation. You know, I do appreciate that. I do appreciate the more detailed budget that was shared. So just, just for clarity, you know, you've got revenue neutral when you have over revenue neutral. What is the over revenue neutral approach or request?
What's the amount over revenue?
Yeah, the amount of revenue.
Four cents, 49 cent total, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I have two other, two other questions. One, I see where the equipment expenses, equipment purchases, 1.1, almost 1.2 million. Is that, do we have a kind of an idea what that is in the budget? Is there something, I mean, is it just vehicles or is there?
Is that on one of the slides we went through already?
It was on the detailed budget, sorry.
On the detailed budget.
I know last year it was a street sweeper or something to that effect.
Last year was what?
I think it was a street sweeper. I didn't know if there's kind of.
There are, there are, we do have vehicles budgeted in the capital budget. I'm not sure the equipment, I could find it out. I just don't know it right off the top of my head, sorry. 1.2, I'll write it down here.
Yes, sir, thank you. And then the other, the other question I had, because we had gotten, we have all gotten some questions regarding the seven and a half million, you know, land acquisition. Can we maybe elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure, I'll go ahead and take that one. So we did include for a provision within the budget to be able to take advantage of some opportunities that we all discussed a little bit internally and some that we may not even know just yet with regards to strategic land acquisition for several different uses that the town or either in whole or in part, in partnership with some other entities, may want to secure the land for right now for future needs. That $7 million, I want to note, is in there both as a revenue and an expense. The intent there would be any of the majority of those land acquisitions, we would be recommending to take debt service out on and anything and/or utilize existing fund balance. As you know, we've reported to you guys a few times that we are sitting slightly above your 30% target, so there is potential that some of those acquisitions could be funded with pay go through fund balance appropriations. But the intent here would be as those opportunities come up to have the availability to debt service purchase those properties. When I say that, that $7 million is not being funded through the tax rate this year. That would be debt service that would come online in subsequent fiscal years. So the net impact overall to the budget this year is flat, but we did want to have that opportunity there as those, have that availability there as those opportunities arise.
Perfect, thank you. I don't have any more questions yet, and thank you for what you've done, staff too.
Sure. Thank you. So this probably might be a Robert and Mayor Rich question. So, and I'm using the term loosely, I have concerns that where 46% of the budget is for salaries and benefits. So I think if you're, we're looking at from fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2025, you know, we look at as far as the increase of personnel. Can I say this loosely, that not saying that we don't need these personnel? I just wonder, as we increase though, are we lining up with our taxes and the money that we bring in? We go to say that the growth takes care of itself. I'm curious to know from a percentage standpoint, and I don't know how we capture that to give to the general public if that, to show that we're lining up from a percentage standpoint on our salary and benefits to what our tax growth is, if they're lining up to both, both the same. Does that make it so you guys understanding that or getting at?
So I'm going to jump in on there and maybe have to phone a friend over there with Mr. Mackay, but from a overall budgetary scenario, so yes, on the general fund, if you look at the 30.7, 30, call it 30.8 million dollars out of the 67.2, we are sitting about 45.8% of salaries and budgets. On the water sewer fund as well as electric, you're sitting more like 8%. That's because a lot of the support services, administration, human resources, that kind of thing, that's all born out of the general fund. So as you take an aggregate of that, we're sitting more around 25, 28%, I think. I'm sure Robert will get it down to the decimal if you need it there. Simple math in my head right now. So looking at it overall, you know, the growth that we're seeing, that is not, there's no area of our services, or no service area or no department that is spared from that. And so over the last several years, we have seen pretty substantial growth in the number of full-time or FTEs or staff numbers to be able to support that growth. You guys have been very supportive, particularly on the public safety side. We've had several, several police officers, firefighters, I think we had just six this year even. Luckily, that was hopefully grants, or that was grant supported as well. So from a delivering level, the services and keeping them at the level of service we are, honestly, we haven't been able to up the game very much. We've been trying to stay status quo with the growth, but effectively that, that ratio of salaries and benefits to the overall budget is consistent with what you see in other growing areas of the, of the region. Several Wake County towns, we did research last week looking at their proposed budgets for fiscal year 26. Those were in the low 40s to mid 40% range in terms of the total budget on the general fund side as well. So we're not completely out of bounds in a, from that comparison metric. That being said, we do look at our salaries and benefits, their comp study every year to be able to stay competitive. And so as they move up, we've got to move up with them to be able to make sure that we can retain or retain and attract new talent. So that's been kind of the strategy we've been looking at, to try to make sure that we're staying, staying competitive and can deliver to levels of services that we're looking for. I don't know if that answers your question?
Absolutely, to some extent. I just want to make sure, and I agree with you as far as supporting the growth. I understand that, but we also being fiscal responsible is making sure as those salaries and everything, as we continue to bring on, that we do line up with the tax base the best that we can. You going to say something, Robert?
I was going to add that across all three funds, our percentage of salaries and wages to the grant total, our budget across all three funds is roughly approximately 26%. When you look at the total.
26% as a, okay. And I guess I will, we will want to do a measurement for the percentage of the personnel and the salaries, okay? And then, you know, that would allow us as up here on the council to be able, better to articulate as far as that we're lining up with, you know, as we bring on personnel to support growth, as you said, but at the same time, we're being fiscal responsible.
Yep, we appreciate that and we appreciate the support you all have given us to be able to try to do this. Yeah, we're in a challenging labor pool right now. I will say we try to be, we try to use the dollars and stretch them as, as far as we can. You know, it's difficult, you know, with 540 opening up, everybody say Clayton and Johnson County could be 15 minutes closer to the triangle, you know, the heart of the triangle. But with that, it also comes with more competition from us, from some of the Western Wake and some of the little, you know, communities to the further west of us that are in a little bit different financial and tax bracket from a travel perspective. So that being said, here in Johnston County, with the quality of life that we're able to provide, we hope to be able to stay competitive from that perspective. And so for your, for your comments, you know, we track this and we will continue to provide you guys updates on it as we go.
Thank you. Again, if we could just put us maybe a slide or something like that in the future, just reflecting that, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to add one other thing. So this is our second kind of hearing on this, and my understanding, we're not voting on this tonight.
Yeah, so staff's recommendation coming out of tonight, we need to close this public hearing and then at the meeting on defer decision to the 16th, due to noticing requirements, particularly with the electric rate, they're required to have different public noticing. And so our intent would be to have the comprehensive list of fees as well as the budget formally approved at the June 16th meeting.
So normally we, we vote after the second public hearing, so we're actually giving another two weeks for citizens to really reach out if they have any questions or so, which I think it's just important that we're not just, you know, kind of pushing this through. We're giving it's due diligence and it's due time. Thank you.
Absolutely.
We do that every time. Anyone else? All right, so this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and we will continue the budget on its third reading, June 16th. All right, now jumping down to new business will be the fiscal year 2025 audit contract.
Community mayor, members of council, tonight we're asking council to approve the audit contract for fiscal year 2025. The audit's performed by Anderson Smith and Mike. The maximum fee increase went up $1,000 from 29,750 to 30,750. And that $1,000 increase is directly attributable to the single audit requirements for our federal and state programs that we have.
Sam's branch being the biggest.
Right, right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Mackay? All right, here and then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the 2025 fiscal year audit contract. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lock, sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And next up will be the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan. So this was a request by Councilman Casey to pull from the consent agenda, so I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, this kind of relates regarding the upcoming fiscal budget and our CIP plan. CIP plan, for those that don't know, is really a wish list of the projects that are needed in the community or needed by, you know, operations and stuff to provide, you know, maintain the level of service and then also provide amenities to, to the community. And so that CIP plan is, it's a list of all kind of our wish list, and we have to obviously prioritize that based on, you know, what we have within the budget and, you know, the funds and the availability of staff to make it come to fruition. But anyway, you know, and it, there is kind of an order to it, there's kind of an algorithm and you, you know, certain things obviously are higher on the CPA list than others, but I guess my, kind of my question also, my comment is, there's a few things on there that may not be as high on the list, but they tag along with other projects and it just makes sense to do them in tandem because otherwise it would be, it would be, it wouldn't be a cost advantageous to do them separately. But one of the questions I had, I guess this could be for the, to the town managers regarding the East Clayton, East Main Street sidewalk project, and then also, you know, kind of that tagged along parking with it. Is that, I know we didn't itemize out everything on the upcoming fiscal budget within the CIP, but just wanted to see if that's one of the things that's still on our, our list.
Yeah, absolutely. So to clarify, so in the, on the general fund, CIP, line 54 currently calls for East Main Street new parking lot. If you recall, as part of the discussions we've been having about moving forward with what is line number two on the CIP, which is the East Main Street sidewalk connector, that parking lot is adjacent to the sidewalk that will be constructed and is actually to mitigate some of the parking losses along Main Street for that pedestrian facility to be installed. So at previous work sessions, we all had discussed the possibility of combining those two projects or adding that parking lot into the EL, I forget the DOT number, but the East Main Street sidewalk connector. So that is the plan moving forward, so these numbers will be adjusted accordingly as that continues to advance. We've been having discussions with the railroad company to finalize that, that design. There was a meeting just as recent as this past Friday with the railroad, NCRR and Norfolk Southern, who actually operates the railroad. My understanding is, I believe we do have a path forward on the design for that parking lot now, so we've had other conversations with North Carolina DOT that is the one that is kind of the gatekeeper for the projects such as the sidewalk lap project, and they are open to us incorporating that parking lot into that project overall. So that's good for us in terms of one, mitigating the actual need for, mitigating the loss of the parking up front and having that parking lot on the ground for the folks that want to utilize that end of Main Street, but also there is a bang for your buck, if you will, by combining it with the larger project to be able to get that, that parking lot constructed with part of a larger project, which is the sidewalk. So the intent for that would be to wrap up all the easement acquisition and finalize the agreements with NCRR, I'll say later by the, maybe later this summer, so that we can be in a position to bid this out and have construction start. I'd say at the absolute earliest late this year, but likely first quarter of 2026. So like you said, just to clarify, item number 54 on the CIP list will be incorporated into item number two and let all at the same time later this year.
Thank you, and I guess it's safe to say, obviously, the CIP is an evolving and always kind of a dynamic list of projects that we have coming up. So we can't necessarily itemize it out in the budget every, every, every year, but if there is a project that is on that list that changes or there might be a need, you know, if we have the funds available and it makes sense, it's up to the discretion, I guess, of the council to do something. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. It's definitely a living document as grant opportunities or other partnership opportunities come about, those are the things that we'd like to bring to you all and try to leverage any of those to be able to stretch a dollar a little bit further. So as well, we got to commit to the top part to be able to go ahead and make progress on design and permitting and land acquisition, for instance. If something on the lower list did come available, that would be a conversation that we would have and we'd have to decide prioritization at that point or the ability to seek additional funding. So we'll continue to have those annually as part of the normal budget process. And then again, if something comes up during the year that we see a good match on the CIP for, like I said, a grant or something like that, we would certainly recommend going for it.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on that? All right, thank you, sir. Up next will be staff reports, beginning with town manager.
Main thing I just wanted to bring to your all's attention, two items that we have upcoming here in the next, well, between now and the next, see the next meeting. On June 7th, the fire department will be hosting Fire Alarm Saturday. Essentially, this is a large coordinated group effort throughout the state with the support of the Office of State Bar Marshall. The fire department will be going and installing fire, smoke alarms, excuse me, in residence throughout town. We have about 80 or so fire, the some provided by OSFM, the Office of State Bar Marshall, some provided at a very low cost discount from Walmart, so we appreciate their support. But those will be going out starting any, around 9:00 AM and we'll finish up hopefully by about 2 o'clock on Saturday. There'll be the area around Main Street, near Atkinson and Moore and Mulberry Streets. So door hangers went out, I believe, last week, so hopefully folks are looking to take advantage of that opportunity. And then the second item, just want to bring to everybody's attention, I think this is the third year in a row that we've been able to have our Juneteenth celebration here at the town of Clayton. It'll be Saturday, June 14th at 3 o'clock here at the Clayton Center. As always, we'll have some great programming, including a presentation of Jackie Robinson's, the story of his life. So for anybody that'd like to participate, it's free to the public. We'd love to have you guys join us. The event's been growing. the public. We'd love to have you guys join us. The event's been growing every year. So tell your friends and come see a great performance. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Thank you. Other staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Come before you tonight to talk about something we're starting with customer service department and Electricity's. Beginning June 23rd, we're going to offer energy audits to our customers. We have 25 slots over the course of the week that we'll be offering to them. We're going to be sending out an email to all customers to let them know about it. And we got a little video that we're going to send along with that so they understand what all is included in that. We'd like to show you that tonight as well.
Free energy audit. They come out, they thoroughly check your house to make sure it's sound. What better gift can you give yourself and your family and avoid future expenses?
So typically when I first get to the home, I will take a picture of the outside of the home and then meet with the homeowner, do a little sit down chat and just ask about their overall energy usage, why they wanted to schedule an energy audit today. And then we just kind of do a walkthrough of the home from there.
He checked the filters, the floor vents to make sure they were sound, went under the house. We did have a toilet leak and it went through the floor vent. We went under the crawl space and he showed me how the air conditioned duct that's connected to the floor vent had separated from it because the weight of the water when the toilet leaked. So I had free air flowing out under the crawl space of my house. So I had to buy a new toilet, have a new toilet installed. I had, I already had that done and the duct work replaced. So it was really good to work on the structure and the foundation of the house first.
I feel like for most customers, if they're on the fence about it, it's going to come down to that one month, whether it's in the summer or the winter where you dig it up higher than usual bill. And so if you're just curious about energy usage in the home, feel free to reach out and schedule an energy audit.
So that was a really big success story that we had through one of the energy audits and we're hoping that'll inspire others to sign up for it. We've also added some stuff to the customer service website. I'll show you that real quick.
Good evening. So one of the things we've added is basically a self-service energy audit for customers. So you can go into this site, we encourage everyone to do this. You enter details about your home, the size, the age of windows, doors, HVAC system, based on the temperatures, it will give you estimates of what your daily usage is, monthly usage. Again, this is just another tool people can use to, to again, understand how their consumption and their households are impacting their bills. It also gives you tips at the end, things you can do to make improvements. And this is a free, again, this is free.
And we'll be pushing that with that email as well to customers.
Awesome.
Any questions?
No, I'm excited. I think this is fantastic. I hope next year we can do 50 instead of 25. And I hope that, you know, everybody, you know, this, this past winter, I received more emails than ever, historic amounts in my tenure as mayor, for how much it costs to keep the house warm. And this is a perfect opportunity for anybody to either, one, apply for an energy audit. We know they're only 25, so get your name in the hat first. Or two, to use this mechanism online through customer service to get a better feel and to educate yourself on what your house is requiring and where you can make it better and work on the costs to manage that. I think it's fantastic. Thank you both. That's wonderful.
Mayor, housekeeping matter.
Yes.
Three F that became nine B needs to be voted upon. It's resolution 2025-44 on page 59 of the agenda.
I see what you're saying. The one under the consent agenda, the request for Mr. Casey to pull item F, three F, it should, we should have, we should vote on that because it's a part of the consent agenda. Thank you. That's great. So I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Clayton Town Council. My name is Dee, the National Board Member for Bayard Ruston, LBGQ chapter of the APRI and Executive Director of the Official Clayton Pride Board. On behalf of the LBGQ community and the official Clayton Pride Board, allies, friends and families, I am deeply honored to accept this pride proclamation from the town of Clayton. This moment is more than symbolic, is a powerful reminder that inclusion, dignity and respect belong to everyone. In a time when visibility still carries weight and risk, this proclamation sends a clear message that there, that here in Clayton, every person matters, that love is not just welcome, but affirmed, that building a thriving, harmonious community is the goal. We honor those who came before us and stood by and made the way for us today. And we look ahead with hope, knowing that when communities like ours come together in truth and unity, change takes root. Thank you to the town leadership for your carriage and your commitment to creating a place where all people can live authentically and safely. This proclamation is a step forward and receive, and we receive it with gratitude, pride and purpose. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dee. Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? All right. If not, I'll open the floor for council comments. Mr. Sims?
Yes. First of all, I would like to be remiss if I didn't thank the Clayton Police Department, the Clayton Parks and Rec, Clayton Fire Department, Stephen's Hot Dogs, Pick'em Pros and Ms. Rivers from Parks and Rec for the Clay Sinclair basketball tournament that we held Saturday. It was a huge success with the community and bringing together the community. Also want to give a special shout out and just recognition of my, my good friend and dear friend, Marlon Lee. The biggest thing that I want everybody to know, and I asked for that picture to be put up there, is that Marlon is known for being the councilman for the town of Smithfield. But as you look in the picture of him here with me, here locally, he, this basketball tournament that we held Saturday, and we was literally in the midst of finishing up the last of the plans when he passed away last week. But as you can see, he's with the Clayton Police Department, so some pastors there. But we had met to get this basketball tournament started. Reason why he came to me and he said, Mike, we got to, or let me be honest, he don't call me Mike. He call, he always called me Big Time. So another story. But he said, hey, Big Time, we got to get this thing started. What can you do? Can we do some things? Which ended up being the Clay Sinclair Basketball Tournament. The special thing about Marlon, and I spoke about this before, he had the innate ability to make everybody feel like somebody. And again, I said this before, if we're going to carry on his memory in any type of way, we should all go out and make everybody feel like somebody. So again, to my dear friend, I'm going to miss you. But we will carry on and his basketball tournament went really well Saturday in your name. So thank you.
So I want to just jump in because it segues so beautifully. Marlon Lee, he created this group at Clayton High School called Men of Distinction. And there was a time a few years ago that Marlon called and said, I'd love for the Men of Distinction to come, sit in the town council chamber and learn more about the mayor and I want you to talk a little more about leadership. And I did. And it is the most rewarding thing that's happened to me since I was the mayor of Clayton since 2003. And I don't know who got more out of that conversation. Those guys listening to me talk about leadership and what was possible, or me looking out at that crowd of young men and seeing that our future was going to be super secure. It was powerful. So our hats will always be off to Marlon and for, you know, producing and growing and cultivating new leadership in our region. I think it's super powerful. On a much lighter note, I'm not really sure who won the game. So we got to give credit where credit is due.
So, uh, Neutrinity Missionary Baptist Church won the game.
There you go.
Yeah, but I will say that, and I made this known, chief can attest to this, that some of their members that they had on there, I did tell them that I expected to see them at church Sunday because I hadn't seen them before at church.
That's priceless. All right. Any other comment? Ms. Anderson?
Real quick, I just want to thank Chief Rains. I want to point out that this smoke detector program we did last year, and it was a huge success. And I remember you talking about how impactful it was to you. So it's exciting to see that continue through into this year. So thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Archer?
I wanted to mention tonight a wonderful local organization that hosted a fundraiser called Military Missions in Action. And I wanted to ask, were you all planning to speak to the commission tonight? I think I'm, if you wouldn't mind me inviting them up for their three minutes, I think that I misinformed them to come up now instead of during the public comment period. So if you all would come on down, they, they are with Tang, the Johnston County Chapter, and Military Missions in Action is an amazing local organization supporting veterans and armed forces, members and their families. So take it away.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Those of you who do know me, I'm Michael, owner of the Design House here in downtown Clayton. I serve as the current Vice President of Tang, the Triangle Area Networking Group. And we're comprised of about 30 to 40 local business owners. And our goal and mission is to help each other out and build each other's businesses by passing referrals. Part of that also, community outreach is my counterpart, Jenny Williams, who is also my sister-in-law, new to Clayton this year. And she has served as our community outreach chair and has done wonderful things to ingrain herself and our mission in the community. I'm going to let her speak for just a second about the event that we had Andrea out to and appreciate you.
Hi, thank you for having me. Jenny Williams. So I'm the community outreach officer at for Tang. And our organization is a local organization called Military Missions in Action. And they are an organization dedicated in assisting disabled veterans, homeless veterans and active duty members of the armed forces and their families through donations of furniture for renovating their homes for disabled veterans, providing mental health services and such. So we put together a fundraiser on May 10th at Apple Law. And it was, it was called Stars and Stripes Fest. So it was a kind of a fun festival, kind of family oriented event where we had some, some, some games and, you know, dunking station and football toss station. And we had
We did try to get Mayor McCloud.
I don't want to mess up my hair.
So it was a great event. We had a lot of, we had a lot of participants and donations from sponsors of members of Tang and local businesses that donated items for the silent auction. And we raised $2,284 for the organization. And 80 cents on the dollar goes directly to the veterans and the active members and their families. So.
That's outstanding.
Thanks.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, of course. Yes, Big Tom. How big's small town, you be Big Tom?
Outstanding love here about this. Everybody in the council knows I'm very passionate about things with the military. So, you know, 21 years retired Marine, if there's anything that you need from me personally, please by all means, let me know how I can assist and help with that.
Thank you very much.
He'll be glad to be in a dunking booth next year.
Everything but a dunking booth. I have gotten too old for that.
Outstanding work. Thank you both.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. All right. Anyone else? All right. With that being the case then, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for legal advice.
Motion. Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Please clear the room. Thank you. Thank you.[318.95]
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.